This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, March 16th meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 5:00 PM, we had a report to the people from the Currituck Cooperative Extension. And at this time, I'd like to ask Reverend Glenn McCraney to lead us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
And let us pray. Lord, you have commanded the light to shine out of the darkness. You call us again to praise your goodness and us to pray for the bestowing your divine favor. We pray for you to descend in all your power on your people and in this meeting. Make us a people who are resolved to live by your truth, your love, your mercy, and walk humbly with you. As people, we have anxieties and fears in our lives due to the economy, threat of terrorism, and social unrests. We pray that you will bring us to us a nation, a state, and a county, and individuals with a clarity of meaning and purpose of life in the midst of these confusing and troubling times. We pray especially for all those with badges who protect the roads and peace. Tonight, our prayers are with our county leaders, bind them together in a common cause as they meet and deliberate to carry out their duties to which they were elected. May they see beyond the limits imposed upon them of what is to the vision of what can be. In these few moments, touch our hearts and the very depths of our spirits with your holiness that each of us will sense your presence and may have a calming of our troubled souls. May our county leaders and your people always feel the awesome presence of the power of your Holy Spirit and be guided by your holy laws. In all this, we pray, and all God's people say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Glenn. Next item is approval of agenda. At this time, under public hearings, we need to delight, delete item C. Need a motion to approve.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to approve. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. The county attorney will keep time for three minutes. We ask everyone, as you come to speak, state your name and your address for the record. And first up is Ms. Mary Etheridge.
Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. At the last meeting, after quoting two of our founding fathers, the chairman said they were some of his favorite quotes as well. So I asked you to listen to them carefully one more time. Quoting George Washington, "Government is not reason; it is not eloquence; it is force like a fire, a troublesome servant and a fearful master. Never for a moment should it be left to irresponsible action." I would like to ask you, what could be a more irresponsible action than not listening to your own professional staff, your planning board, your attorney, the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, and many more who recommended that you not approve a junkyard in Shawboro? But you did not listen to reason, and you used your force to approve a junkyard in Shawboro. But as a taxpayer and a voter, I will never let you be my fearful master. You have unnecessarily cost me thousands of dollars. No citizen should ever have to bear the burden. And if you're honest with yourself, you know what the 2011 commissioners did to my family was wrong. And quoting Thomas Jefferson, "My reading of history convinces me that most bad government results from too much government." Yes, since 2011, I have had too much government. And during the last election, I think some of my fellow citizens felt the same way and voted for more responsible government, thinking maybe someday our board will be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Wheeler.
Name is Jim Wheeler, live 191 Beachwood Shore Drive in Moayak. I spoke to you the last time about the security cameras at the new courthouse at the Judicial Center complex. I don't know where that's gone, but I just wanted to make you aware that this past Thursday, they had court. They had a crowd go outside. They threw chocolate milk all over the whole front of the courthouse, and all the windows had to be cleaned. There's no cameras out there. We need them out there, and we need them out there now. We don't need to wait until July for a new budget. I don't know if they can come out of the occupancy tax. I mean, we get a lot of tourists to come into the courthouse, you know, to pay tickets and stuff. I don't know if that money could be used for that or not, but something needs to be done.
Man that back to the manager.
Mr. Chairman, since your last meeting with Mr. Wheeler got up and spoke and brought this forward, I have talked with the sheriff's department. The sheriff is responsible for security at the court building. She is working to rearrange items in her budget, has identified the necessary funds to install security cameras at the front of the building, and she's moving forward with that effort with a contractor right now.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. That's all I have signed up. Is there anyone who wish to speak that didn't sign up? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public comment and move to our next agenda item is presentation of fiscal year 2014 audit by Chris Burton, Carr Riggs Ingram LLC. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Been about a year, hasn't it?
It's been about two years. I missed last year.
Somebody else came.
Yeah. How's everybody tonight?
Great.
Good. I'm going to do this real quick. Is that okay?
Go right ahead. We received the document, what, about a month or so ago?
About a month ago. Each commissioner should have received a copy of the report in your basket.
And I know the snow kept you from coming right after we got it.
Couple weeks ago, that's right. Clean opinion, we found nothing materially wrong. We found nothing wrong. Sandra and her staff does a great job, even though we were a little weakened staff during the year for some time. She got behind, we got behind. It was, but we got all through it. This is the 14th year that the county has presented a comprehensive annual financial report, which has been approved. We're proud of that. That's very high in the reporting industry for governmental units.
Sir, what does that mean? Explain that a little more, please.
Okay, hold on. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States awards a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the county for its comprehensive annual financial report. GFOA is in Chicago, and they actually grade these reports. And I don't know how many in North Carolina have them. Dan, do you have a clue? But it's not many. So y'all should be proud of that, really should be. Let's get to the financial summary. Your total assets for the year were $166 million. Your net position is $139 million. That went up $3 million this past year, which we added to fund balance. We're getting, the local government commission likes your available fund balance to be 8% of your expenditures, and y'all are up to 15%. So, good job, good job. That's with 90, goodness, your tax percentage, tax collection rate was like 98.5, which is very good, very good. Let's see, what else do we have? The only, you know, item that I see as a little trouble is the sewer projects y'all have going on, which I know y'all have been talking about those. And I'm surprised LGC didn't say something about it. But you've got two of them that your operating expenditures are more than the revenues. We need to work on that. I understand that that is in the works, so just, you know, I just want to make y'all aware of that. The last real thing, you know, y'all get federal and state financial assistance from the feds and the state. 13 million federal, 6 million state. Lot of people, you know, don't realize that y'all, you know, you get that much. Lot of that's Medicaid benefits. But, you know, the government does do their share. A lot of people don't think they do, but anybody got any questions?
Just make a comment on the two sewer systems that you raised the issue on. We went into those knowing that initially they would be a drag on revenue.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Until you get users. And right now, the user base is not growing.
Right.
As fast as we would like for it to be, but that was planned, and we were aware of that when those projects went forward.
Right.
The one in Moayak was originally planned back in 2007 or '08 sometime.
Been back, yeah.
And it's just got online within the last couple of years. And so it's just going to take a little bit to get those up.
Yeah. And I know sewer projects are very expensive, much more so than water.
Yep.
Water's expensive, but...
Does anyone have any questions?
Now, you do a lot of municipal audits, I assume?
A lot, yes.
Do you have any comments about the staff and the financial position of the county?
Financial position is great, very, very strong. The staff, they do a great job here, really do. We make very, very few journal entries, which is always good for an auditor, because we don't need to. Things are A-OK. And I enjoy coming here, I really do.
We enjoy having you when you give us a good report.
Yeah, you go welcome me back, right?
Give us a bad one, we might not enjoy having you.
That's right.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Just a comment, I'd like to thank staff for all they do, our finance department and manager, and all of them for the great job that they do to keep our county in a good position and to not just keep our head above water, but keep us swimming high on the water.
Now, Dan, the availability of the audit to the public, is it online? Is it available at the libraries, the county facilities?
It will be online if it's not already. It's already online.
Online.
It's already online.
Okay, and then just go to the county website, and they can see anything they want to see?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
I bet that happens to you all the time, doesn't it?
That's a first.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the Mobile Crisis. Keith Hamm from Palace Point Christian Church is going to talk to us about the Mobile Crisis organization that he runs, and we're glad to have you. I know that you've been trying to get here a couple of meetings as well.
Yes, I have, and I really appreciate the opportunity to give you a synopsis of Mobile Crisis in Currituck County last year, and I will be brief and respectful of your time. Now, although I am affiliated with the Palace Point Christian Church, they are no way unaffiliated with Mobile Crisis. So I just want to make sure that you understand Mobile Crisis. And you have a letter from me, from Integrated Family Services, which is a private provider that offers Mobile Crisis services. Actually, we're the only provider in 16 counties in northeast North Carolina that ECBH has endorsed with state funding. So it is Integrated Family Services in those 16 counties, of which Currituck is obviously one of them. Currituck is a little bit different in the fact that I live here. And I came here, actually moved here nearly six years ago, because we were having to respond to Currituck County and Dare from Elizabeth City, and we wanted someone to be closer, in closer proximity. What Mobile Crisis does is with the collapse of the Albo Moral Mental Health, and I'll be real brief with this, because I know some of you are very aware, and there are some new faces. With the collapse of the Albo Moral Mental Health, East Carolina Behavioral Health came in, and instead of offering all hands-on services, they are a managing entity that offers mental health services through private providers. And they have raised the bar, the standard, by which those providers have to function continually until we've seen a large number of providers fade away because they could not make the cut for the standards of excellence. Mobile Crisis is a service that responds 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We go in the community to where the individual is in crisis, in any type of mental health or substance abuse crisis. Our job is to come in, we de-escalate the situation, we do a bio-psychosocial assessment. We, by service definition, want to divert people, divert people from the hospital and incarceration. We do that about 85% of the time, thus saving the taxpayers of North Carolina, literally across the state, tens of millions of dollars a year in unnecessary hospital stays and incarcerations. The letter that I provided, I believe, lets you know that last year, there were about 118 crisis calls in Currituck County. Of those crisis calls, 20 of them, I believe, if my memory serves me right from the letter, were directly from law enforcement. That means the officer called Mobile Crisis. 27 of them were directly from a school, which means a guidance counselor called Mobile Crisis. That is not reflective of the total number of times that we have assisted law enforcement and the schools in Currituck County. I will tell you that in relation to your sister counties, and I'm going by Google statistics, so if I'm not exactly correct on the population, please forgive me, but about 25,000 people in Currituck County. There are 40,000 people in Pasquetank County. However, there were only 137 total calls in Pasquetank, 118 in Currituck. There are 35,000 people in Dare County, but there were only about 80 calls in Dare County. Now, when I shared these statistics with somebody the other day, they said, boy, Currituck's really messed up. That's a joke. I mean, really, it is. I said, no, trust me, Currituck is not really messed up. There is a huge need in all of these counties. But no, what these numbers actually illustrate is that Mobile Crisis works right in Currituck County. Because of Currituck County, we went to East Carolina Behavioral Health about a year and a half ago, and we said, listen, what's been happening is law enforcement calls Mobile Crisis, and because we're a private provider, not a governmental agency, we serve at the consent of the consumer. So the officer quite literally would call and say, I have someone here, I don't want to arrest them, it's a mental health issue, or it's a substance abuse issue, there's no sense taking them to jail. I don't want to take them to the emergency room, because if you're not aware, if someone is involuntarily committed, you commit an officer to sit with that person in the Albo Moral Emergency Room, and then, until placement is found, and then that officer has to transport. So that's a huge drain on your law enforcement budget. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. So when I say we divert 85% of the people we see, that's big numbers for the taxpayers, but that's also big news for the citizens of Currituck County, who aren't just taken away to the jail, are taken to the emergency room if they don't need to be, if we can handle things outside of those means. So the officer would call, and we would say, well, we need to speak to the person you have there. And the officer would hand him the phone, and the person would say, no, I don't know you, and I'm not talking to you. And then the officer's left there in the community, trying to deal with a mental health issue. And they're not equipped for that, that's not their job. And it's a drain on law enforcement. So because of my relationship with law enforcement in Currituck County, I went to my boss, and I said, please let me respond regardless of what the individual says. By the time I get there, they'll either consent to service, or let's just eat the money and help the officer. And my supervisor said, sure, we'll do that. So he found out quickly that it worked every single time, every time the person ends up consenting to Mobile Crisis services. So what happened is they went to East Carolina Behavioral Health and said, we're going to always respond to law enforcement and magistrates in 16 counties. That was born out of the relationship here in Currituck County. And to law enforcement, that's the best thing since doorknobs, because they roll up on these situations, and that's not their deal. So they're able to call Mobile Crisis. Our rack cards are in every law enforcement car in Currituck County. As well, the magistrates can always call us if a family member comes in wanting to commit someone, the magistrate can call us to come in for an assessment. We will always respond. We do respond to the schools. We respond immediately and face-to-face. Working in conjunction with the parents, we see that the child received the services that they need and the coping skills that they need to go on past that crisis. All right, I gave it to you pretty fast. So that's a lot about Mobile Crisis in a short amount of time. Any questions?
I'd like to make a statement. As a retired law enforcement officer, we appreciate your help out there. One of the things that I found was, when you were able to assist us, that it was less repeat calls back to that same address in the future. Is that what you're seeing here also?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, I do training for law enforcement in all 16 counties as well, and I always start the meeting by saying, raise your hand if you've ever driven away from a call and you said to yourself, I'm going to be back in an hour. And there's always a sea of hands. I said, that's when you need to call Mobile Crisis. They've not broken the law. They don't need to go to the hospital, but somebody's having a meltdown. And so call Mobile Crisis and let us come in. And yes, absolutely, the officers are taking advantage of that, and they're seeing that they don't have to come back. The other thing that we're seeing, too, is that we're able to communicate back and forth with those officers, and sometimes there are repeat calls, not necessarily the same night, but a week later, it happens again. Because I can go, and I can de-escalate, and I can help somebody develop some skills, but I can't force them to follow through on treatment. So then the law enforcement comes back, and there are often times that we work together to try to find resolution to some of these repeat calls that are draining not only law enforcement, but also EMS.
Thank you.
So you bet. Absolutely.
Any other questions? We appreciate you coming and sharing that with us, and you'll have an invitation to come back next year.
Thank you, I appreciate it. One other thing I would like to say, just so you know, there's not a charge to any individual for Mobile Crisis services, by the way. Insured, uninsured, it matters not. We respond, and there's never a charge. So that's why it is a service to the citizens as well as the agencies. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate you doing it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next item is Army Corps of Engineer permitting issues. I'd ask the county manager to give a brief overview of some of the issues that we were confronted with. And I also believe Jerry Wright is here tonight, I'd spoken with him, and he can share a little bit about the historical channel at Whalehead as well. So, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir. As you mentioned, you had asked me to bring back to the board for general discussions various different issues we've had over the last probably 20 years. When I go back and saw the dates, and it's amazing how long some of these projects have actually been working on with the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm bringing to you tonight for conversations really three that we're working with right now. The first one is at the Veterans Park, a county-owned piece of property in the Coin Jottick area. Here's an overhead site. This is a piece of property we actually bought from the federal government. It was used by the Coast Guard. And the issue is that dock right there, the deck. It protrudes enough out into the canal that unfortunately, it has been struck at least three times in the last four or five years, to the point that we've had a structural engineer go out and take a look at the structure, and the pylons have experienced enough damage to where they have told us that they do not feel like it is safe for the general public to be on the top deck. So we've had it roped off. We've been working with the Army Corps for about two years now, attempting to get the permit, where initially, we wanted to go out and just shore up the pylons that had damage to them, and continue on with the project as it is. The challenge, or what the response back from the Corps was, is much like a road is for the traveling public, the canal is a road for boats, and it does to have a right-of-way just like a public street would. And this deck protrudes into that right-of-way, and therefore, they would not permit it to be repaired or fixed in any fashion. And I'll remind you, this is a dock that the federal government actually built. So we have been working with them for about two years, and we received this about two, three weeks ago. This is the compromise that has been offered by the Army Corps, which is a permitting agency. We can't touch the deck until we have a permit. If you see the yellow line, that part of the structure can remain. The part that is the canal side of that yellow line will have to be removed. And so with that, we are moving forward with the modification and the repairs. I'll be bringing that to you, actually, during the budget for the necessary funds to move that project forward. And if you like irony, this is a bit of irony. This was last week. This is one of our neighbors that lives on the other side of the canal, took this picture, and we are a little bit to the top right. That's an Army boat that's tied up to the dock that we cannot get the permits to fix.
You can't break that off.
No, that was last week.
Dan, can you go back to the drawing? Is it possible to extend the yellow further, that area that protrudes out? Can we extend it further down to kind of make up for the loss of the deck?
Well, the yellow line is not representing the length of the property, it's referencing the protrusion into the water. We'll be able to...
Make it longer?
Yeah, we'll make, I mean, the whole front of our property on the water will be, well, it is, it's bulkheaded, and it has decking there. We'll do some repairs to it, but it will not be able to protrude into the water except for the little bit of the yellow there on the main deck. But it will be the length of our property.
Okay.
Okay.
You should send that picture to the Corps.
It gets better.
Have any idea, it's the history as to how long that dock has been there?
I have, I really have no idea.
It's there in the late 50s.
And the reason that boat is there, when we acquired it, when the federal government or the Coast Guard left the property and they surplus it, we were giving, as a local government, a right of first refusal, and in the deed, they reserved the right to continue to more and to use the facility. That, again, that we cannot fix.
That's illegal.
Yes. Okay. Gets better.
Okay.
The roads up in the Carova Beach area, this is a project we have been working on, this one probably goes...
20 years?
Probably 10, 20 years on this one. And I'm just showing you a couple pictures. That's a road to 99% of the people in Currituck County and that live in the area, that is a registered wetlands to the Army Corps of Engineers. That is a wetlands. The challenge we have with this, as you notice, it's when the holes start forming, people start driving around it, and you can see in this one on the left-hand side, you're moving now beyond the right-of-way, and you're actually trespassing on somebody's property. But they're resilient, you gotta get through it. But this is the road system that's in Carova.
Is that a wetlands, too?
That's a wetlands.
We have a couple of wetlands in the Food Lion Park lot.
Now, Mr. Scanlon?
You must attend to meetings when we have conversations about the difference between a wet pond and a dry pond, and some of them, although they have water, are considered dry ponds. Those we could fix, the wet ones we could not, but that's...
Just for clarification for us, is what you're saying that prior to there being this water hole, when there was a road or right-of-way?
Yes.
It was a road?
Yes.
Then because a hole formed, because of traffic, driving on an authorized right-of-way, it got deep enough that there was standing water, it then, at that point in time, became... It then at that point in time became wetlands under the definition. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Now, the impact of that, because it is wetlands, what's the ramifications for that road?
Okay, we're gonna get into that.
Good.
And, and, and it does, and it's not a matter of depth. If, if it stays wet enough and the soil starts showing hydric characteristics or you start getting certain kind of plant life, it takes on the characteristics of wetlands and therefore gets categorized as a wetland. So depth, depth does not have to be an issue, although as you can see, some of them are pretty deep.
Oh, gosh.
So when this one came to the board is when, now, under, most of the folks that we have talked with probably have heard this at nauseam, but county governments do not have the statutory authority to, to invest in, repair, fix, or do anything with roads. However, there is a, a statute that allows coastal communities that have sand roads that we can get into the repair and maintenance if we create a district. And in 2009, the Board of Commissioners sitting at that time, developed a district around the Carova Beach area. The conversation was held on the entire full-wheel-drive area. A lot of the communities were in opposition to, the fear of taxation for various different reasons, objected to a district to be created in their particular community. So the Board restricted it and we went into just the Carova Beach community, which you see the, the map on, on the picture. The Board provided an initial allocation. It actually is a one-time allocation, allocation of $300,000 to begin the process to see what could or could not be done to start addressing the situation. When we, when we first went up there, the Board of Commissioners, when, with, with the creation of the district, they created a, a visery board of, of folks who live in the community. That group identified the road system of level of importance of where they want us to start. They wanted to establish a north-south right, route that could be passable year-round. And it was identified as being Ocean Pearl. The original program was to go into Ocean Pearl and to address some of this water is you've got to move it and take it somewhere. So the original design we submitted was to have, put a crown on the road as you would and have side swells that would collect the runoff and convey it to the, the ditches that existed in the Crowe area. And that was submitted to the Army Corps for approval. And it was denied by the Army Corps of Engineers. They raised a concern that if we started putting swells on the road, that we in fact would start draining the wetlands and they would, they disallowed the actual program.
Which is the road?
Which is the road. Which is the road.
Trying to drain.
Uh, well, we're trying to drain the, the roads. The engineers are telling you that the long-term fix, you've got to get the water off the road or the potholes just keep coming back. You got to do something with the water. So the intent was to convey it to the existing ditch structure up in, in the area and let it naturally go out the way that, you know, it, that it wants to go out. And we were denied that. We met, I can't tell you how many times staff and Commissioner Idlet had met with Army Corps and the KAMA folks on-site. It was numerous. One of the, the byproducts of that was we went around and actually identified which one of these holes is actually a wet hole, which one is a dry hole, which one is a wetland, which one we can work on. So we were allowed to go back in and the ones that were not, considered wet by the Army Corps was beyond their jurisdiction, we started doing repairs on. We fixed all of those that we could fix. The next one was the ones that they were smaller in size and we were able to mitigate in order to be able to fix those. And we, we had about, it was calculated, the total amount of the wet holes was one-tenth of an acre. And it was $6,000 to mitigate those and we fixed those. These are pictures of that area. These are, on the left is the before and on the right is after. So as we went up there, you can see, major improvements have been done to the area.
We, we had one more impediment as we went along in that thing too, Dan, just to recall, and, and the Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yes. The three major drainage ditches that run from the center of the island towards the Sound traverse Fish and Wildlife property. We asked if part of this prog, program, if we could go up and do some cleaning of their ditches to, to enhance the flow, the outflow of stormwater. And we were denied that also. They brought a new word to our, our vocabulary called naturalization. And if an area under the Corps, Army Corps, if an area even though once permitted is not maintained so that it goes back to its natural state, it is considered to be in its natural state and you go back to square one. So we, we have to work through those issues. We were able to handle Ocean Pearl from just under the state line to where our park is. There is a couple, probably another mile or so of Ocean Pearl that goes south of our park that is heavily wetlands. And, and so we, we, right now, we do not have the funds or the mechanism to go in and address the road in that area. Our calculations, it'd be over half a million dollars in mitigation contributions to be able to address that area. So we moved over to the Ocean Most Road, which was Sand Fiddler. We did the same process where we addressed the quote-unquote "dry holes." Then we moved over to the wet holes and we paid, on, the, the wet holes on Sand Fiddler was .3 tenths of an acre and we had to pay $25,000 to be able to address those holes into a mitigation. That's not money going to fix, that is money you pay to the federal government. And we went in and we fixed Sand Fiddler. We have just let a contract within the last week or so to address the Center Road, parts of the Center Road, and to address Sand Fiddler further south. So at this state, we have gone in, as you can see, and, and done a, a, a pretty good job with what we were allowed to do. We are now in the process of just entering into a maintenance phase. A couple of years ago, the Board of Commissioners put a fee on the horse or, or the tour operators, not just the horse tours. And a, a significant portion of that fee is used to go back in this district and to maintain what we have accomplished so far. And so from this contract that we just left, that will, that will expended the entire $300,000 and now we'll be into a maintenance phase. This is, is after years of diligence and perseverance, I think the staff is hung in here and we've actually, I guess, have a bit of a success with this project. That brings us to the big one. This is one that we have been working on for probably close to 25 years. I think everybody understands and recognizes this photograph. This is the, the county-owned property, the Whalehead property. When this property was acquired back in the, the early 90s, one of the compelling reasons the county acquired this property, that unfortunately over time tends to get lost, was this property was the linkage between the mainland and the Outer Banks. The county commissioners at that time saw the opportunity to buy a piece of property where the folks in the mainland could go to the beaches in the Outer Banks by going across by boat. It provided water access. In fact, in a few minutes, I'll tell you that there probably is not another public water access like this between the Wright Memorial Bridge and the state line. It had a high value for the Board of Commissioners and it was one of the most compelling reasons why they moved forward with buying the property, was to prefer, to, to preserve it for the public use and the use of the, of the citizens on the mainland as much as on the Outer Banks. The owner of the property before the county acquired it, received a KAMA permit to put in the boat basin. And as you can see, they did a wonderful job of putting boat slips, docks, and they created a, you know, just, just a wonderful boat basin there. It is hard to understand why they would allow, under state grants and state and federal permits, this level of improvement to be done without giving you access to it. But that's exactly what's happened. This is, when we talk about dredging, and this goes all the way back to the very first attempt to try to get it into, we are actually somewhere in, in the stages of doing it now. This is what we're looking to do. The, the channel, as you can see on this map, shows you, the channel, from the boat ramp, you don't go straight out. It actually hugs the contours of what is the old airstrip on the property. And we've been asking to go in and to, to maintain the historic channel that exists under a permit. The picture I showed, the very first picture I showed you that showed from, it was a lighthouse view of the property. This is blowing up and kind of going into some points of reference. The first one, again, if you like irony, is the channel marker. That is there as of right now, has been there for I don't know how many years, but at, at least as long as we've owned the property, there is a channel marker out there that marks the channel that we cannot dredge. I'm also gonna, I also point, as you can see, the, the area that's referenced is the airstrip. You can see, well, first of all, you can see the, the level of erosion that has occurred over the years. But you can see pylons or, or markings that go out towards the water that show you the, the once, the boundaries of that area. I show that to you to show you this. This is a working dredge. In the 1950s, a gentleman by the name of Merle Porter borrowed this dredge and this dredge is actually sitting in the area of the photograph I just showed you at the Whalehead Club. It is working in that channel to clean, not only clean the channel, but it's taken the spoils of the channel and it's putting the airstrip in that was there. That's the dredge working in 1957. This has been part of the application. When the question comes up that, that either the, the channel is not documented or, or it didn't exist, or whatever the various arguments are, there's an actual dredge working on-site maintaining the dred, the channel. We have documentation from when the Navy owned the property. We've got work orders and we've got contracts where they have had it maintained. The contracts show the width, depth of the channel. I believe we had some folks that were working out there as early as the, the late 1990s and the 2000 that were working out there that actually dug up a dredge head that was actually in the channel that supposedly has not been maintained. This is a photograph from the 1950, I think it's 1958. You can see inside the, the red box, that's the, an aerial of the area. You can see very distinctly, not only is the water the channel there, but the depth of the channel. So it shows historically, we've had a channel there. Our interest in this, from the day we acquired the property, and I'll show you in a second, we, we've made several runs at this and, and probably are not done making runs at this. But again, one of the things that gets lost is, one of the most critical things about that property is it provides a connection to the mainland. And so our interest in dredging the property is establishes, establishes a critical linkage between the mainland and the Outer Banks. It provides access to the water for public safety. There is no public ramps north of the Wright Memorial Bridge to access Coeur d'Alene Sound, be it state or local agencies, WRC, Wildlife Resources, Coeur d'Alene County. So we wanted to establish on public property, public access for public safety responses to the water. We have the Wildlife Education Center there. We have the Whalehead Trust operating there. There's tremendous opportunities to educate the public on the heritage of Coeur d'Alene County, our hunting heritage, the birding heritage, right there on grounds that education is, is a focal point. Our argument is, if you go in, establish a channel that's well-marked and well-delineated, it actually improves the environment. Because right now, you can try to go into it, it's, it's water-driven, but you can go in there right now with a boat when you have depths. So there's, there's no restriction to you. And if you're not following the marked channel, you're probably doing more environmental damage than not. So our argument is, if you give us a controlled channel where you, you put the boats through on a consistent recurring basis, you're doing less damage to the environment in that particular We think there's tremendous amount of recreational opportunities by allowing people access to get onto the water. There's tremendous economic opportunities, ecotourism. Again, with the traffic, it's, it's an alternate route to, for folks to be able to get to the Outer Banks. We've all seen what NC-12 traffic looks like. So we think that there are several reasons why, you know, that it makes sense to move forward with, with such an endeavor. In 1995, Coeur d'Alene County made what appeared, and this is going back into the file, Coeur d'Alene County submitted an application in 1995 for number one, to dredge the channel and number two, to put riprap on the southern border is, is, was experiencing some erosion. We actually applied for a state grant and got a state grant to do this work. And the application was denied. The riprap piece was approved, the dredging was denied. In 1998, the county submitted another application. This time was to dredge, the original application was to, to dredge the channel once again. And it had in it a condition where the spoils that came out of it would go in and fill the southern pond, the faces out the front. That became an issue in the application process. So not only was dredging a challenge, but none of the agencies actually liked the concept of putting the, the spoils in that pond. In fact, the pond was actually dug back in the 80s by a previous owner as part of a mitigation effort that they were placed under. So that complicated an already complicated process. We started the process again in 2011. We had submitted an application. We were in the process of moving through the regulatory issues when DOT had some, some folks that went up and, and kicked the channel and it became a federal issue, a court issue. And unfortunately, people ended up going to, to jail on that. And we have that applicant, we, we pulled that application back and it's still pending in, in, in our hands. What's the issue? It, this is, this is, again, not irony, but in every one of the applications that was denied, the 1995, the 1998, and the language of the 2011, the language is always the same language. And so this is the challenge that we're up against when we try to move forward with this project. KAMA, Division of Coastal Management, SAV issues. They're all gonna mention this. This is, it's sub-aquatic vegetation. It's grasses that grow in the area. Grasses are, offer protection for little fish, food source for little fish. It, it encourages fish habitat. This is, you, you gotta like this. The second one, this is a KAMA issue. Dredging will increase access to the property. And that's a problem.
Duh.
It's inconsistent with management activities, estuaries waters. That, the KAMA's comments have been the same on all of theirs. This is marine, this is national marine fisheries. There's a state marine fisheries and a national. You're starting to see the same thing. They bring up an SAV issue. They also mentioned that they've designated this as an essential fish habitat. And again, SAVs. EPA, SAV issue. Fish and Wildlife, SAV issue. So these agencies are all going on record is, is denying the, the, the dismissal of a permit or the approval of a permit because of the amount of grasses that grows in the area. And this is what they're talking about. These are pictures taken of the channel when we had, the wind was blowing in the right direction. It has blown the water, it was blowing most of the water out. So number one, you can see is-
See the channel?
You can see a channel because it's not, and it, what looks like a beach is not the beach. That is, you are looking from the boat ramp to the point, in fact, at the very tip of that, you can see the top of the channel marker. It looks like a beach, but SAVs are the issue.
Mr. Scanlon, what aquatic vegetation has national significance?
Um, I don't know how to answer that.
There, there it is, right there, if you want to see it.
That's another picture of looking, this is, now, this is, you're looking from the, the, the piers, looking back towards, the boat ramp is gonna be over here on your left-hand side, you're looking north. And again, what looks like a beach is actually the, the, the area we're trying to work in that supposedly is heavily seeded with SAVs. Here's another shot. This is, you're at the ramp itself, looking out. And again, you see the, the, the beach. Another shot to drive this point home, you see the beach. And there you see back in the day, when you could, you can see actually a boat following the channel, actually making access into the, the boat basin. What we have now, I mean, we, we have this application that we had submitted. The Army Corps position is, we have told you no twice. You, unfortunately, because of DOT activities, you have- You, unfortunately, because of DOT activities, you have a federally warranted mitigation site. So they do not believe that they would have the desire to permit that which the federal government is required to be done, to be undone. And so those are our challenges. Now, when you talk to the locals or the folks that try to go into this area, when, and you saw the pictures of the, enough indentation there that shows you that the natural or the existing channel, when the DOT went in there, the mitigation required not to fill it back in with the material that was in the area, that was naturally removed from the, the channel when the boat kicked, but they actually hauled sand in. And from everybody I've talked to, the sand was not the same sand that you see on the muddy bottom. So they filled it in, and now if the wind blows out and you want to go back and look at the pictures that we have historically had, you're not going to see that picture because now you've created a hardpan, and that area has been filled in, and to a point where even when the tide is up, you get no movement on that, on that bottom, and it's more challenging, if not more difficult now, or more restrictive today than it's ever been about trying to get a boat into either the boat basin and/or at least to the boat ramp. And so the folks that try to run in there tell me it's, again, it's more challenging now than it's ever been. This is where we're at. The application that we have pending, I think Commissioner Idlet was with the staff. We went down a couple of years ago. We did what they call is a pre-scoping meeting where we went down and sat down with all these agencies and told them, this is our intention, we're going to submit the application. It gives you an opportunity to get comments before you finalize your application. And we were asked to tighten up or to expand what our alternate analysis was. Whenever you do an EA, you've got to show all the possible solutions to the question you're asking and why they are not preferred to the direction you want to go. And so we came back and we were doing SAV counts south of the property, and actually, we went as far down as DeDere County to see if there was any other logical county publicly-owned place where we could come back to them and say that we could accomplish our goals of what we want to accomplish by going over a different parcel, and there just isn't. There isn't enough, in fact, I'm not sure if I'm aware of any public property from here all the way down to, again, the Wright Memorial Bridge, that allow the, the public access to the Outer Banks from the boating, by the boating public. So we have that in our hand now, trying to determine the next way to move forward. Now, throughout this period of time, we have had numerous meetings with our federal representatives. We have met with numerous different Army Corps representatives. We are actually in, although Norfolk is closer to us, we're actually in the Wilmington District, so our, our contacts are in Wilmington and Little Washington. We've talked with both offices, and as of about two weeks ago in a conference call, they really had no appetite whatsoever to even have a conversation with us about dredging. Their position is, we've told you no two times, and again, you've got a federal ordered mitigation. We see no reason why you're even attempting to come back. And so that is where we are with this issue.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Well, I guess a comment, just to reiterate, I guess, what you said is that one of the reasons for turning down the Whalehead dredging permit is that it was inconsistent because it would increase the use of the Whalehead Basin. That is after they permitted the county to spend money to build piers and docks in the basin for that very purpose.
The exact same agency.
And people wonder why we look at the government sometimes and go, what are you thinking?
Yes.
Now, too, I've got a question. This is relative to the Carova, Carova Beach. And this would be a legal question. I think I already know the answer, but I'm just compelled to ask it. The right-of-way that we show, I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, the right-of-way is part of a deeded or platted piece of property. Is that correct?
It's, was shown on a plat that went to record in 1968.
So, this is what I'm afraid to ask, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Inasmuch as it did not belong to the federal government, nor did it fall under control of the federal government in any way whatsoever, at that time, where it was legally planted and has henceforth been utilized as a right-of-way road, they now step in and say it's a wetlands. Could that be considered a taking? And if so, whether it's eminent domain, and I may be mixing metaphors, but if the government steps in and takes property that hitherto and before was privately owned and, and takes control over it and limits or restricts the use thereof, can that be considered in any way a taking? And if so, is there any course of action the government can, not, the county can pursue in order to maybe mitigate the restrictive oversight that they have put on us?
I mean, that's an interesting question. The roads are actually owned by the original developer of Carova Beach subdivision, although those who have bought pursuant to the plat have rights to use the roads, in essence, an easement. So they also have a right that may well have been taken, that individual property owners-
Has that been pursued? Because I, to me, and I'm not a lawyer, but to me, that would look to be, under any definition, a taking, and it would be actually the imposition of federal, a federal taking of privately-owned property, and consequently, would there be any sort of recourse that the previous owners and/or those that have a vested right in the utilization of that road when they bought property in that subdivision could pursue?
I don't know that the developer nor any property owners up there have pursued that point of view. I guess the, the analysis would probably be the same as the analysis would be if the county were to take property of the state of North Carolina, which is, what is just, just compensation for the taking if one is deemed to have been taken?
And the just compensation would probably, would it not be, would be based on the detrimental impact to the value of the land, the egress, ingress?
I think that might be one issue, particularly if someone has lost ability to access their lot at all. And I think there probably are some circumstances, Commissioner Idlet probably knows better than I, but some circumstances are, there's some that are, we think are rapidly developing, where there are going to be individuals who are going to be unable to probably access their property as the roads deteriorate and become wetland areas that nothing can be done to improve them.
I mean, I just, I don't, I asked a question, I thought some maybe, maybe would have thought of that angle before, but, I mean, on its face, it just appears to me to be an obvious taking, and those consequences are not, not only the people that own the property, but the people that enjoy the value that was originally in that property. So I, is there some, some preliminary? Can we look into that, or is there something, or? I know you can only sue the government if they let you sue them, but it would seem-
Well, I suppose the county might look into that. The county would not ultimately have legal standing or the ability to take any kind of action or initiate legal action against the federal government.
I know that, but, but we as county officials, I mean, we're, we're here to try to help, help not only the property owners over there, but we're also here to promote the interest of Currituck County. And if we can use our resources to look into this and see if there's some method whereby those withstanding, i.e. those property owners or those that enjoyed the use of that for egress and ingress, we can whisper in their ear. I mean, I don't care how we get there, I don't care who has standing, if we can do something about it. I mean, that's, that's what we're here for, isn't it? Maybe.
Yes, sir.
I think, in the years that I have delved into this, it's been quite frequent, and I think the issue is, the Corps has never said, you can't do anything, can't do something. It's the, kind of like the old analogy, sometimes the disease is more costly than the cure. The little parcel that Mr. Scanlon was talking about that measures a little over a quarter of a mile, that connects Ocean Pearl from the park, from there to the Waste Management Site up there, is probably 80% wetlands. They've never told us that we could not go in there and work it. What they have told us, that the first step would be a study that would end up costing the county about $650,000, just to see what the implications of draining, what implications that would have towards draining their wetlands, so to speak. And, and so, you know, it's, I-
I understand that.
I understand what you're saying, and I applaud it if we can do that, but-
I understand that, but, but to my way of thinking, but for, before they were in a position to tell us that you would have to do this, it was privately-owned land. They, they inserted their right to tell us or whoever, we had to spend this money to do, and in a way, that's a taking, they're, they're taking. So I'm just saying, whoever over there, they owned it first before the government imposed and said, oh, no, now we've got control over it because we have snail darts or something that are swimming around in that, that hole over there. And that's my only point, is do we have so-called vested, or do those people have vested rights? Or is it a taking? Or when they interpose themselves and say, you're going to have to spend $250,000 to do something that prior to that, they're imposition, we didn't have to do? I mean, that's, I guess that's what I'm asking.
It's really kind of ironic because the place was developed, at some point in time, someone got permits to dig all those canals, fill all the wetlands that now is the neighborhoods that are there. And so it's kind of a circular thing, but one of the big things that keeps coming back up is natural, naturalization again. And I believe that the, the, the benchmark that they put on that, if there has been no maintenance done within a certain period of time, and I, don't quote me, but I believe they said 10 years, then it's considered to being a naturalized state, and all bets are off and have to start back at ground zero for any permits to do any kind of improvements. I believe that's, I'm right there.
Well, I think Mr. McCree can-
Yes, anything can be done is great.
But I, Mr. Wright might have something to add to the Whalehead Channel. He was in and out of there a lot and has some history about what was going on. He said he would like to speak to that.
And to Mr. Beaumont's question a while ago about the SAVs, I believe the definition, as I have heard it, for the SAVs is any type of grass that is a natural type grass for Currituck Sound. Could be millethou, could be celery, could be all different, wigeon grass, just all different kinds of stuff.
Well, it sounds pretty strategic, so I can understand the federal interest.
I think it's all inclusive, I believe it is.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Wright, you can hopefully steer us in a way of wisdom.
Good evening. As the chairman has said, I've had some involvement in this process over the years. I came to see Dan the other day, and he and our former manager, Mr. Richardson and Marshal Cherry and I sat in a room right over here about 100 feet and negotiated to buy the Whalehead Club in 1992. A gentleman from New Jersey had come, who had ended up with a property with a savings and loan, and they wanted $4.2 million for the property. At the end of the day, I think we offered them $2.4 million for about 60% of the property, and they weren't too happy that that was going to be their offer from us, and five weeks later, they were wanting to know when we could write them the check for it. There were three main goals when the county bought the Whalehead Club. To restore the main building, the Whalehead Club, back to the condition it was when it was built. To build a center over there for wildlife education, and for display of artifacts that the county had in terms of their waterfowl heritage and history. And to provide a place as a junction where the mainland people could go over and either go to the, a lighthouse, Whalehead Club, the Wildlife Center that was going to be built, or the ocean and an oceanfront usage area where the people of Currituck could easily get to the beach and utilize those functions, because we had spent millions of dollars to open up roads and access to the beach so the Currituck citizens could go and enjoy our beach. Several months ago, I saw an old friend of mine that had served in the legislature, and he asked me, he says, Jerry, I don't see you at the beach much. I said, well, we go to home on Friday afternoons and lock the door and come out Monday morning because of the traffic, and it's actually easier for me to get in the car and go to Virginia Beach and get on the beach quicker than I can go to our beach at Corolla. This is a picture of a cousin of Mr. O'Neill's. He built this boat in 1943. It's called the Mildu. It's a historic boat here in the county, and it's sitting in the, the boat basin at the Whalehead Club. It draws about 14 inches of water, and when it hits the bottom, it kind of scurries over on its side because it's a tunnel boat, and you kind of, and sense the restoration that was done by the state of the channel. This boat, or a bigger one like it, that I have a picture that, of it in the boat basin, won't go into the boat basin no longer. I have to tow a skiff behind the boat over there, and when we hit bottom, I put about half our people in the boat and push them up to the dock so we can get out and walk over to Corolla. It's a sad time that we don't do that. I have a picture of a boat that I bought for restoration that was hopefully going to be put in the boathouse. It's a boat that was actually used, it was built in 1906 on the northern Arone Oak Island. It's called the Red Wing, and it was used by Mr. Snow and his son and the help at the Whalehead Club. It's in the boat basin over there. It's 33 foot long, it draws about three and a half foot of water. The only way it would get into the boat basin is if a crane picked it up off a truck and set it in the boat basin, because it can't get in there anymore now. It's in the boat basin in this picture, but it's not anymore. This is one of the issues. We started shortly after we established the Whalehead Trust, we started to pursue permits to try and get a better, more usable channel in there. I've been told it was never a historic channel in there, that it wasn't used. My second trip to the Whalehead Club, my first trip was in 1954 after Hurricane Hazel, and the next trip was to go and look at my father's ridge, which he had leased to Mr. Porter to help do the work on the airstrip and on the channel going into the boat basin. The lady says, oh, no, we never have any, any kind of information like that. When they did the restoration work, I think the record will show, they found the Cutter Head off my, my father's ridge that Mr. Porter had worked on, and it was still there next to the Daggon Channel. So, it's, I've spent 29 years of my life working for conservation and wildlife and water quality in North Carolina. I spent 10 years on the Wildlife Commission. I spent 17 years on the Clean Water Board in North Carolina, working to do restoration work. We did $2 billion worth over a 17-year period. Government is not supposed to work like this in this situation. I'm not sure we want to destroy what's there, but we also basically want to give people a common sense way to get to one of the resources, one of the best resources in America, our beach, so they can go over there. They can't get there by car unless they want to sit in line for three or four hours. And I hope that our commissioners will spare no effort now, I know we've worked on it from year to year, but spare no effort in trying to resolve this channel issue at the Whalehead Club. It's the last goal that we had at the Whalehead Club that still hadn't been accomplished, and until it is, I'm not going to stop asking about it and working to get this done. Anything I can do, or any, any way we can put together a group to help support this, I'm more than willing to work and hopefully will get other people, I've heard a lot of other people talked about their interest in trying to resolve it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do, I do want to add this. I know that Congressman Jones has been contacted, and we've seen him numerous times, and I believe he said that the Corps Colonel was going to come up and meet with us, and then I believe the Colonel called and said he's not coming. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, Senator Tillis is, is new. We haven't made a run at him yet. And Senator Burr, I don't really remember having a lot of conversations with Senator Burr on this. I remember a lot of requests for meetings, and, and with Senator Hagan, I remember a conversation with Senator Hagan at the library. She said, this is a no-brainer, and, and you're not asking for money. She said, I can't believe you're not asking us for money. We told her, we don't want money. All we want is permission to go in and clean the channel out. She said, well, that'll be no problem. That was the last we heard from her, and of course, she's gone now. But I think we need to formally ask for a meeting with Senator- gone now. But I think we need to formally ask for a meeting with Senator Burr and with Senator Tillis. And I hope that the presentation you just did, we can get that condensed down into just a CD to give. So, yeah, a PowerPoint or something so that they can actually see how ridiculous this is. It's just beyond the pale. And I know the newspaper covered this, and just the citizens just had to see this to believe it, how ridiculous this is. So, I appreciate your efforts, Mr. Scanlon, putting this together and staff. And Mr. Wright, I appreciate you coming and taking an interest. And I would like to request a formal meeting with those two gentlemen, and not just their staff people.
If I could add one thing. Mr. Wright, didn't the federal government during World War II lease Whalehead or portions of it? So the federal government likes to use our dock, and then we got it. Then they tie up to it. But they didn't get a ticket because they tied up to something we're not supposed to be using. And then they won't let us into a basin they gave us a grant for that they leased during World War II. So please add that part also, that they leased our Whalehead. So they saw a strategic importance of it that they won't let us use.
In our application, we actually have Navy documents that show that they have a work order where they commissioned and paid for the channel to be cleared out that specifies the width, length, and depth of the channel.
South of Mayo went every day. School kids come from there every day.
Yeah, I used to go over there as a kid.
Whalehead, right up through that channel. I'd sit there at my house where I was born and raised and watched them go in there.
Yeah.
Went to school with the kids.
All right, anything else? All right. Thank you, and thank you. Next, we'll go to public hearings. Item A is PB 08-42, Academy Security Training Facility, Request to Renew Special Use Permit for Security Training Facility. The property is located at 850 Puddin Ridge Road, Tax Map 12, Parcel 1, and Tax Map 17, Parcel 1A, Moayok Township. This is a special use permit. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to needs to come forward and be sworn. Place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth. So help you God. Thank you. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request for a renewal of a use permit. This property is located out off Puddin Ridge in the Moayok Township. I've attached a portion of the site plan that was approved for this property five years ago. Academy's use permit is for a security training facility, which we allow here in Currituck County in the Agricultural Zoning District. That use permit was approved in March 16 of 2010, so exactly five years ago from today. Academy is here to request a renewal of that permit. In the 2010 approval, it was granted for a five-year period, and that's why they're here before you today. Blackwater, or excuse me, Academy, formerly known as Blackwater, apologize for that. It is located, actually primarily in Camden County. I'm not sure if folks always realize that, but the portion that's located in Currituck County includes four shooting ranges and a portion of the driving track of the road course. And it's a little difficult to see, but on that site plan, you can see the county line, bisects, the row of shooting ranges, and about four of those are in Currituck County. The top right-hand side of the map is the Currituck County area. Then you can see a little portion of the road course that's highlighted in dark gray. So basically, a turn of the course is located in Currituck County. Since the permit was issued in 2010, the county staff has not substantiated any complaints out there at that operation. To the best of our knowledge, they've operated in compliance with the permit that was issued in 2010. For that reason, staff does recommend approval of this renewal request. However, we recommend that if renewed, that the previous use permit conditions carry forward into the renewed permit. In your packets, you can see the request for extension received from Academy. I'll also note that in the request, they were asking for an extension without a renewal period, basically just an unlimited extension. And with that, I can, or excuse me, yeah, this didn't go to the planning where renewals come straight to the board of commissioners. So with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Woody?
I did. I know that, and it was, I think, determined that it had, it was not on the or within the Currituck facility that there was shooting early in the morning.
Yeah, the county.
About a month ago.
Yeah, the county received an email several weeks ago, and we followed up with representatives of Academy, and we could not determine that there was any shooting in the Currituck County portion of the facility.
If I remember correctly, Academy's response was, and I thought there was a requirement that there is no shooting prior to 07:30. Was that in existence, or is that one of their operational guidelines that they themselves have imposed upon themselves?
They have a requirement, the no act. Let me check, let me check the use permit and give you an answer on the hours. I need to look at that to be sure.
Because I seem to remember seeing that.
I'm Kate McKenzie. I'm the deputy general counsel for Academy. The hours are 7 to 10. So we can't shoot prior to 7:00 AM and after 10:00 PM. And we did that complaint. There was an email that we received about a week and a half ago. And we looked at our records, and no ranges went hot before 7:10 that day, which means no one was shooting. And we also checked the video cameras onto our property, and no real traffic came onto property prior to that time. So we responded back to the individual as well.
And I do thank you for your prompt response. I would hope that regardless of where you were in the re-permitting process.
Of course.
That it would be like that.
Yes.
But the 7 o'clock item, I'm just trying to confirm whether or not that's a county-imposed restriction, or if that's just something that you say you're going to do.
It's in, it's either in the UDO itself, or it's in our special use permit, that it's 7 to 10. Yes.
And when you, and the other question that came up was, and I, when you said that there's no shooting on your ranges, that I would include on face value, both the Currituck ranges and the Camden ranges are, there was no shooting prior to 7. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, because it's, both counties have, we have the same hour restrictions. The only difference is the shooting on Sunday. So on Sundays, we're allowed to shoot in Camden, but not in Currituck. And we, we've instructed our staff as to that.
And, Mr. Beaumont, the hours are actually in the Currituck County Unified Development Ordinance. So it's seven, no activities prior to 7:00 AM or after 10:00 PM. That's all I have.
I have a question myself. Speaking of Sunday, you weren't shooting this past Sunday, were you? Because somebody was shooting in the Moayok area on Sunday, generating some complaints.
I, we're certainly happy to look at our records. I mean, as I said, in Camden, we're allowed to shoot, which is where the majority of our ranges are. We are allowed to shoot on Sundays. So I don't know if the noise was coming from that area, but we can certainly, no problem going back. But we have instructed staff, those four ranges and that part of the track are not to be used on Sundays.
I'm not sure that it was you. I just thought I would ask. There was complaints.
All ranges were active in Camden County on Sundays.
They were?
There was gunfire on the facility on Sunday, in Camden County.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to make a comment. As far as the Academy, I'm part of the volunteer fire department in Currituck, and I know we've used the Academy in the past for training on explosives, how to deal with them, and demonstrations of the different explosions. And that was very, that was very enlightening and very educational. And I just wanted to thank the Academy for allowing the fire departments to use that for the training because it was, we had a big turnout. And that is very helpful for the firefighters.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anyone that signed up have anything to add? Hearing nothing, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
I approve PB 8-42 for a period. Subject to the previous special use permit conditions.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Can I ask a quick question before, wasn't, was the request for unlimited, and Mr. Hall, Commissioner Hall, were you putting a restriction for two years versus unlimited? Was that?
Correct.
Okay. What was the original request?
The original use permit term was five years, and then Academy has requested unlimited.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hall. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for two years?
That was the motion.
Okay.
And it was originally for five, though, correct?
That, the first one was for five. Academy's requested unlimited. And I guess my question would be, why just two for this renewal?
I'm looking at the fact that we have a lot of houses, a lot of things going on. We have ranges. I think it's a good thing to keep a check and see if things have fallen correctly. If we go unlimited, do we have the recourse to come back and say, hey, wait a minute, we need to stop?
You would have the option of notice of violation, civil citations, up to proceeding to revoke the permit for violation of terms and conditions.
At any time. Is that, at any time, is that correct? At any time?
That's correct.
I think this just gives us a stronger leg to stand on.
All right, any further discussion? All right, I have a motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Nay.
No.
No.
So we have a tie.
The motion, therefore, does not carry.
Okay, I'll ask for a substitute motion.
I would like to make a motion.
All right.
I would like to move to approve PB 08-TAC-42 for a period of five years, subject to the previous special use conditions, permit conditions.
All right, we have a substitute motion for five years.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for five more years. Next item is PB 14-33, Barry Nels, Request to amend the Uni, excuse me.
God bless you.
Pardon me. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 5, Development Standards, to allow an increased height and electronic message board for off-premises directional signs. Mr. Woody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment request, which is a legislative matter before the board. The text amendment submitted by Mr. Nels is intended to amend the sign ordinance portion of our Unified Development Ordinance, and it's specifically in reference to what are called off-premise directional signs. What this does, as you mentioned in the introduction, Mr. Chairman, is that it will allow an off-premise directional sign, which is already allowed up to 10 feet in height, it would allow that height to be increased to 15 feet. It would also allow an electronic message board component to be added to the sign. Excuse me. So what I want to do, real quickly before I give the staff recommendation, is I want to run through kind of the history of off-premise directional signs here in Currituck County. Because over the years, we've had a number of amendments and kind of changes to how the county has managed these types of signs. Originally in 1992, the UDO allowed for off-premise directional signs in Corolla Village, businesses located within 1,200 feet of, or excuse me, in Corolla Village, for businesses located within 1,200 feet of Keratoke Highway, and for businesses located along the intercoastal waterway. This original off-premise directional sign was allowed to display the name of the business and the direction in which it was located. In 2011, the board of commissioners approved an amendment to the sign ordinance, and part of that amendment request was to remove the allowance for the off-premise directional signs. That amendment, that package of amendments that came to that board in 2011 was part of a comprehensive sign ordinance amendment that was prepared by a sign committee, and that included representatives from both the beach and the mainland, business representatives, as well as resident and community representatives. Fast forward two years, in January of 2013, the board approved an amendment reinstating the off-premise directional signs for existing businesses located in a commercial zoning district on the Currituck Sound or Atlantic Intercoastal Waterway. So now, today, the UDO allows, again, off-premise directional signs not to exceed 64 square feet in area and 10 feet in height. When you apply the requirement that they be located off the Keratoke Highway and adjacent to the Currituck Sound or Atlantic Coastal Waterway and be zoned correctly, we found that there are six businesses that meet that criteria. Barry's Restaurant on Walnut Island, Pearl's Restaurant, Midway Marina and Motel, Krabby's Restaurant, Coin Jock Marina, and then Point Golf Club. Those would be ones that can meet the threshold for what's currently allowed to have an off-premise directional sign. And so again, what this amendment basically does is takes that, take that provision that's in the ordinance, was put back in in 2013, and allows the height to increase from 10 to 15 feet, and allows it to have an electronic message board. I've provided an image of a sign that Mr. Nels gave to us previous to submitting the text amendment. I'm not sure if this is exactly what he wants to do. It may still be. But this is a version of the sign that he's proposing. And without passage of this text amendment, that sign would not be permitted as an off-premise directional sign. Staff has evaluated this request, and similar to what we've done in the past, we are recommending denial of this. Principal reasons being that, and I'll go through kind of a couple of things. One is, the request is not, and I'll note, we also, staff also recommended denial of the request in 2013 as well. The sign, their text amendment is not consistent with the recommendations of the 2011 Sign Committee. Proposed modifications are not consistent with the purpose and intent of the sign ordinance. It results in off, staff feels the changes result in an off-site advertising sign rather than a true directional sign. And finally, it's inconsistent with Land Use Plan Policy CA 5, which states, and I'll read, "This Currituck County recognizes that attractive, less commercialized landscape, particularly along heavily traveled land and water routes, is essential to the tourist base economy of the area. The placement of additional billboards and off-site advertising signs shall not be permitted in Currituck County." And again, that's from a Land Use Plan policy in the 2006 Land Use Plan. The planning board heard this request at their February 10 meeting. At that meeting, the planning board recommended unanimous approval of the text amendment as presented by Mr. Nels to allow, again, the increase in height to 15 feet and the incorporation of the electronic message board in accordance with the UDO. With that, I can answer any questions you have.
Somebody have any questions? Mr. Woody?
Just a couple, and maybe, again, to start off with a comment. The two years I've been on the board, sometimes we get recommend, well, we get recommendations from the planning board, and we get, sometimes we, we approve consistent with the planning board, sometimes the planning board. Sometimes we're opposed to the planning board, and we're often asked, well, how come you're contrary to what the planning board says? Well, one of the, one of the things that I was looking at when I was looking at the packet through this is Section 2.3.9 of our UDO requires the planning board to clearly state the factors considered in the making of a recommendation and the basis for the rationale for that recommended decision. We see in this particular instance, the planning board unanimously approved this, but I don't see in the planning packet relative to the planning board's unanimous decision that they utilized in any, when they approved this, any rationale or reason that would provide compelling reasons inasmuch as it does, it's not consistent with our 2006 Land Use Plan. And of course, the 2.3.9 UDO requires that they provide and clearly state the factors. I don't see any in our packet. Were there any, to your knowledge, were there any provided?
I was not present at the planning board meeting. However, I'll note that the meeting minutes and the motion recorded do not reflect anything you've just, you've just mentioned. So no, to my knowledge, there was not any rationale given for the recommendation by the planning board.
All right. And then, before I got, was elected to be on this board, a previous board commissioner's put together an advisory board that was comprised of various business owners, I think Chamber of Commerce, and, could you enlighten me, who else was on this advisory board for the sign? It was citizens?
It was citizens, it was just regular citizens. It was a mix, it was a pretty diverse committee that worked on this.
Okay, so we had a diverse committee that brought to the board, and based on their recommendations, it was inculcated in the So we had a diverse committee that brought to the board, and based on their recommendations, it was inculcated in the UDO that we, that the prior board subsequently adopted. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
So, and one of the things then, and I'll go back to my first comment, that is if we're, if we're asked to change a text amendment, we have to have the compelling, I would think that we should have compelling reasons from the Planning Board that would indicate thus the rationale for making such a decision. Now, I also understand that the UDO provides this sitting Board of Commissioners the, the, the right to remand any text amendments that we receive back to them for further consideration or clarifications relative to their requirements under our UDO, that I've already enumerated that one. Also, as, as you've, you've, you've stated that it does, it's not consistent with our land use program, so I'm just, I, I think we should consider that maybe before moving on as to whether or not we want to remand this back to the Planning Board to have them tell us why they made a unanimous decision and what compelling reasons they had inasmuch as it doesn't appear to be consistent with our two thousand and six land use plan.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chair, is this going to be open for, do we have public comment on this?
Public comment, or it's a public hearing.
Okay.
That's the next step. Open the public hearing, and I believe, Mr. Nels, you probably, you didn't sign up, but I'm sure that's what you're here for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, it's public hearing, you don't, I mean, it's a, you don't have to swear in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I came before the board a while back about the use of an off premise sign for my restaurant because of the declining business at the south end of the county. Those of you that live there, probably all of you know, that from the two bridges, from the Coin Jock Bridge to the Wright Memorial Bridge, there are ten restaurants that have closed in recent years. Not out of business, they closed. And that represents probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty people, maybe sixty or seventy families that are out of work, all the way from the point to Coin Jock. And my business is right in the middle of that. I had, or would like to comment, first of all, on the staff's denial in that, and going to Mr. Griggs, because of, of the comments that the staff made upset me. And I brought this before the Planning Board, and I bring it before you. The LUP Policy C dash four in your packets that you have says that signs and policies standards should be established and periodically updated to enhance the community appearance and create a quality business image. That's exactly what I'm doing. I think that's why the Planning Board approved my request. I can put out a four by eight sheet of plywood out of my piece of property, put it down on the ground, and I'm not going to draw any business. And it will look like all the other four by eight pieces of plywood that are out there for all the businesses in Currituck County. And what does that do? That gives an image to the sixty-five thousand people a week that come down here of what Currituck's about. I'm trying to change that. I'm trying to change the image of Grandy and change the image of my business and enhance Currituck County with a twenty thousand dollar sign. That's what I'm trying to do. And I'm trying to do that on a piece of property, a three acre piece of property on US one fifty-eight that I've owned since nineteen eighty-five, and I've paid commercial taxes on since nineteen eighty-five. That's what I'm trying to do. The second part of this statement on CA four says that such standards may be tailored to achieve different development characteristics for different parts of the county. And that's exactly what I'm trying to do also. Grandy is a business community, like Molyak is a business community, like Coin Jock is a business community, like Point Harbor is a business community. Those are the business communities that travelers see when they're stuck in traffic for three hours trying to get to that beach. The problem with my business is that my business is not located on the highway. You know, I've got Hardee's, I've got Sonic, I've got McDonald's, I've got Dunkin' Donuts, I've got seven elevens. That's what I'm competing against. And those people that come down here every weekend are looking for a lot of things. Most of them travel from the Pennsylvania area. And when they come down here, they're tired. They got kids screaming. They want a nice restaurant to eat in. I have a wonderful restaurant on the water, on Currituck Sound. Sportsman's Paradise is what we're known as. We're known as the Key West of North Carolina. That's what one national magazine described us as. And so people traveling down the highway, they're stuck in traffic, that are looking for a place to eat or a lodge to stay in, don't know that I'm down the road. I'm one half a mile off of US one fifty-eight. My wife and I have worked very, very diligently to try to save our business. We've had to close breakfast, and we've had to close lunch. We're open seven nights a week, and we're open for lunch only on Saturday and Sunday. And we're holding on by a thread. We were doing great until Hurricane Irene wiped us out. Four foot of water threw my whole place. And we're trying to do what we can do to enhance our image and enhance the image of our community and provide work for more people with this sign. When I got before this board before, and you unanimously approved, I believe, wasn't it, Mr. Chairman? You unanimously approved me to have an off premise sign. And I was told that the sign could be ten foot high. Well, I was thinking as a builder since nineteen seventy-five that the height is from the bottom to the top. And so I came down here in December and applied for a permit to get my sign. It was this, it was sixty-four square foot or less. Actually, it was forty-some square foot, I think, when it been eighty, forty-eight square foot, so I'm way below what I'm allowed. But I was told, no, you can't do that. It can only be ten foot high off the ground. And I said, no, that's elevation. That's not height. Height is from the bottom of this table to the top of this table. No, and I went back and read, and Ben pointed out to me, and I was incorrect in my assumption about what height the sign was. You can't have that. And so I told Ben, I said, Ben, what sense does it make to have a directional sign that is on the ground? First of all, you can't see it, so it's ineffective. Second of all, it's going to be subjected to vandals. We have a lot of vandalism in this county, as we all know. So somebody's going to walk by that twenty thousand dollar sign with a baseball bat and take all the digital lights out on a weekly basis. And I talked to the sign company, and the sign company said it needs to be a minimum of fifteen foot high. That's what I, that was the drawing that I gave Ben and gave to y'all. So I'm, I'm trying to, to, to work through, because I'm, I'm, I'm not fighting you like your, your dissertation was against the Army Corps of Engineers. I'm trying to work with you, and I'm trying to work through making this a better, more attractive county. Y'all just spent, what, twelve thousand five hundred dollars on finding out why we don't have any businesses here. And there's a lot of reasons I'm sure you're going to find. And one of them is this UDO and the land use plan and, and all of the regulations that are in it. They are prohibitive. They are totally prohibitive. I had two developers in my place this week, both from Virginia, that said, no way in H, where they come and build down here. And this was after going to, and I, and I begged them. I said, you know, you reconsider. I said, this is a good place to live. I've lived here, you know, most of my life and love it here. And I said, there's a lot of opportunity here. But there's a reason why we don't have any businesses here, and I don't want mine to die. You know, my business was one of, Jerry probably was, Terry Sanford, Governor's Terry Sanford, Walnut Island was his favorite place to come. And he came here for over ten years, a duck hunter. The other thing the land use plan policy said in CA five, "Currituck recognizes that attractive, less commercialized landscape, particularly along the heavily traveled land and waterways, is essential to the tourist base economy of the area." Well, I submit, first of all, that this sign is totally attractive. It's eye-catching. A man, and the sign has to be fifteen foot in the air though. A fellow riding in a car with a family has to look up. He is not going to look down to where the bypassing traffic is going to block the sign up. He can look up and see this attractive sign and say, hey, there's a place to eat. Hey, there's a place to stay. And I can compete with the hotels at Derrick County because I'm hundreds of dollars less expensive. You can go stay down there in the summertime for three hundred and thirty dollars a night, or you can stay at Berry's for seventy-five dollars a night. And we're rated four point five on TripAdvisor. We've got the highest rating. We're even rated higher than the, the big hotel, the Hilton down at, not the Hilton, but the, the big hotel in Kitty Hawk.
That's the Hilton.
Is that the Hilton? Yeah. They're not, they're not rated any higher than we are. And, and I'm amazed at that. Because I have an amazing wife who has done a tremendous job on redecorating those places and making those places themes and making them attractive. That's what this whole sign issue is about to make. It also said that it's essential to the tourist economy of the area. The placement of additional billboards, Mr. Woody put in there. Mr. Billboard, give me the definition, Mr. Woody, give me the definition of a billboard.
I don't know that.
I'll, I'll tell you what the definition of a billboard, and this came before the, the Planning Board. A billboard is a large sign that is rented on a regular basis for people putting up different ads for different businesses. That's what it is. Donna and I rented five of them, forty by twelve foot, and we've given up every one of them because they were costing us between sixteen and eighteen thousand dollars a year. And we didn't have that much money left over at the end of the year, guys. And so this was our alternative. What are we going to do? I'm not going to quit. Most of you that know me, I mean, you know me, I'm tenacious as hell. I'm not going to quit. But I'm going to find a way to make it work for my business, for my community, and for my employees. But, but this statement is incorrect, and it is not a billboard. It is not a billboard at all. It's a directional sign on my commercial property. And I ask you, why wouldn't I be able to put up a sign on my property anyway and advertise anything I want to? Three acres on one fifty-eight is commercial. And it's because of the land use plan. And it's because of this sign committee. I don't know, I've never been on a committee in this county in my life. I've been here since nineteen seventy-six. And I've been in the business since nineteen seventy-six. Construction, the restaurant, and the lodge. The Planning Board, I think, made the right decision. The staff denial, the other thing I will tell you is that the staff denial made a statement, and maybe Mr. Woody can, can tell you about that, about this not being a reasonable or in the public best, best interest. That's what the staff wrote. And I asked Donna Suval about that after the meeting, because I'm friends with all of you and, and always will be. And I asked Donna Su, I said, Donna Su, what is not reasonable about my request? I said, why, why, why did your staff put that in there? She says, we're required to. We didn't want to put it in there. We're required to. I said, what do you mean, we're required to? We're required to by state statute. Is that right, Mr. Woody?
That's correct.
Thank you. So that, so that, so you, that you're putting an incorrect statement before you guys, for everybody that comes up here, like me, for something like this, and making, saying that it is unreasonable and it's not in the public best interest. That's what the staff tells you. And that's not how the staff particularly feels, maybe they do. But they told me they didn't feel like that way towards me. How is it not in the best interest for, so the public can see this sign and pull off the road and get a motel room in Currituck County instead of going to Derrick County? How is that not in the public best interest? I'm the public. The people that work for me are the public. The people that are traveling down here are the public. So whose best interest is it not in? I don't get it. And why the state makes staff make that statement because of a state statute is just like, if you fellows heard Mr. Scanlon talking about the Army Corps of Engineers, it's crazy. It's the government killing business. And all of us know, this nation is going down the tubes on a lot of fronts. And economically, it's going down the tubes. I don't care what they tell you on TV. Things are not any better than they were. Give you one instance. Last week, we got our liquor license from the state, the bill for the liquor license. It went up sixty-one percent. Last five years, I paid thirteen hundred and fifty dollars for an ABC license that allows me to sell beer, wine, and liquor. Went up to twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars. No explanation. Pay it by April the thirtieth, or you're taken off, you get no permit, and you have to go back and requalify all over again. Sixty-one percent increase. My health permit, have to get two, one for the lodge, one for the restaurant. Went up from fifty dollars each to two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, that's money I have to pay before I go to work or I have no permits. That's, that's what business is like on a small businessman's side over here. The Planning Board, as I reiterated, voted eight to zero unanimously in favor. They did not say in that meeting why, as Mr. Woody said, they did not say why. And David, I didn't know that that was in there, and probably nobody else did either, that they have to say why, but they did. The history of my signs, I'll give you a brief, just a real brief history, because I, I know y'all have got a lot to do. When I bought Walnut Island Restaurant, I had a sign in the middle of the median at the intersection of US one fifty-eight and Walnut Island Boulevard. Walnut Island Restaurant and Lodge. Sportsman's Paradise. And it was there, it was my sign, it was part of me buying it from Kay Woodward when I bought the place. Soon thereafter, within about two years, the state took over the road and told me I had to take the sign down because it was a commercial sign and it's not allowed in the state right of way. So I took the sign down. I then negotiated with Smith's Alethia Bomb, who owned the property where Hardee's is now, and put the sign on that property. And maybe about four or five years later, his mom comes to me and says, I need to try to see if I can break up the property so you can keep your sign, because I know how critical it is for you to have a sign off of your property, but I've sold the property to Bodie Noel. And Bodie Noel comes, and they would not negotiate with me, they would not break up the property, they wouldn't let me move it on the back of the property, and they put in a scat through that's now a Hardee's. So I had to take the sign down again. So I took the sign down again, and then I moved the sign across the highway. And I moved it over there to where is now the Handy Hugo. And it stayed there for maybe two or three years. And then I got a call from the property owner of that property, and she gave me fourteen days to take the sign down because she told everybody in Currituck that she sold it to McDonald's, when in fact she didn't. But I had to take the sign down, and seven months later, she sold the property to the Handy Hugo people. So I took the sign down again. So, and, and if, I showed you my records, you could see my business going and coming as my sign is deleted off of that highway. I mean, it was, you know, good, bad, good, bad, and people remember, and they come back, and all that's good. But the people that don't, and even the local people that ride by there, they forget because there's so much congestion there at that intersection right now. So I then went back to DOT. And I asked DOT, could I put any kind of sign in the median? And they said, yes, you can. You can put a sign up there as long as you don't use the word restaurant, or as long as you don't use the word motel or lodge. So I put the sign back up again. So I have the sign up and had the sign there for fourteen years. Paid the state every year for the permit, put the little metal tag on the sign. For fourteen years, I had the sign there. And that helped my business. I used the logo of the three flying canvas back ducks. And, but all I could say was Walnut Island. Then when I was gone for a month in Costa Rica to school, the Property Owners Association of Walnut Island decided they were going to capture the sign. And they went to DOT, the sign was up for renewal, and I was out of the country. And the Property Owners Association of Walnut Island destroyed my sign. I was back that day it happened. It was a Saturday morning. My sign was laying over in the seven eleven parking lot, and the contractor that put, put it down had me in his face. Okay, I get restrained by a police officer, say they have every right, they have, they have a permit from the state of North Carolina, they said, and they did, to take your sign down. They're going to put up a subdivision sign on your sign sign. Wasn't anything I could do. The three canvas back ducks that you see on that sign right there are mine. I made them. I cut them out. I let them have it, and I just let it pass. But during the time since then, I've had nothing. So I first of all tried to give all of my business to Currituck County. I rented the sign from Mildred Quidley's daughter, Karen Pierce. I rented a sign from Ms. Odom, right here. Both of you saw it. Rented a sign from Mr. Roberts over in Shawburns. Those were three of the five signs that I had. And that helped for a while. And then the economy, six, seven years ago, started tanking. And all of a sudden, Donna's at the front of my office when people come in, and she asks everybody, how did you hear about us? How did you hear about it? Nobody hears about us from the billboard signs anymore. Nobody hears about us from the billboard signs anymore. Becky Howard just told me she just lost the one she's had for, a Holiday Inn forever, because Holiday Inn says billboard signs don't work anymore. So we're not renewing your license to, for her billboard sign. And that, they're right, Holiday Inn's right, billboard signs don't work anymore. And so I'm giving up, or have given up, five billboard signs. I'm requesting a sign smaller than what I was allowed, and hopefully that you, you all will, will see what I need to stay in business. 'Cause I haven't, I have no other recourse, I have nowhere else to go. You know? It's, it's, it's me and you, and you have the right to approve or disapprove it, and I, I understand and I respect that. I need the fifteen-foot because of the visual importance it is to travelers. I dare say, I don't know any of these people on the sign committee, who they were, but the average citizen, me, and I'm, I'm an average citizen too, knew nothing about it until I spent two days researching it on the internet. And I, I called three major sign manufacturers, and then I found the International Sign Association. And they basically tell you, and it's common sense, we all see that. If you have a directional sign, it needs to be high. We travel down the interstates, and what do you see? You see 'em a hundred to a hundred and fifty foot high. And they're telling you to turn off here for this attraction, or turn off there for that attraction. The signs that are down to the ground are the ones when you turn into a doctor's office complex and you're already there. So you're just looking to go to building A, B, C, or D if you're up in Chesapeake behind the hospital, and that makes sense for that. But it doesn't make sense for a directional sign. A directional sign needs to be high. And the sign company that, that, that sent me this said a minimum of fifteen-foot high. This, this sign is five foot by eight, is it? I think? Or, or something like, and it may be a little larger, a little...
Five by eight, that's correct.
Five by eight is, 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 and I'm allowed, I'm allowed something larger than that. And the benefits to the message board, why the message board? I'll give you one other little anecdote here about the signs. We put the sign up at Mildred's and said, when we first bought the one from, uh, from Ms. Mildred when she was alive, we put the sign up there and it said, turn at the first stoplight, because God knows, Grandy's got a stoplight. We were big time back then, whatever year that was. So stop, for, then what happened a couple of years later? The rescue squad, Lower Currituck Rescue Squad, puts in a flashing light at the res, at the, uh, rescue squad intersection, so, so the, the fire trucks can get out safely. Then we have people telling us, they're coming in and turning at the first light and going down Papa Branch Road. Oh my God, you know, well, you know, I didn't think about that. And so we have all of our signs that cost five hundred to six hundred dollars a piece, the plastic signs that they wrap around billboards now, all changed to say two lights. Then what happens? McDonald's comes in, and they put in another stoplight. So all of a sudden, the two, turn at the second light doesn't work, you've gotta turn at the third light. But the message board is important to get me the message on how to get to my place in all changing conditions. And it serves a lot of other purposes. What it does is that, first of all, it's attractive. And people see things that are attractive, they're gonna come back. And they're gonna come back to Grandy. And when they come back, they're not gonna come just to my place. They're gonna come to eat at maybe Wise Guys, or go to the, uh, the vineyards, or, or they're gonna go to other places that they see around there when they see something that is attractive. And if they stay in the lodge, which we do have an increase in people staying on Thursday nights to avoid the traffic. I think Donna took, what, two, two reservations today? For people saying, we're coming down to Pennsylvania, we liked your website, we saw what you had, my, we're dead tired when we get there on Fridays, we wanna come on Thursday night, spend the night, and then we can drive early Friday morning and avoid the traffic. We can put that message on the board. Traffic is holding you up three hours. Stop and eat in Grandy. And I'll do that. On the message board, I can put Fall Festival at Griggs Elementary School, I can do that. This sign has an instant amber alert that is nationally done, and it flashes on this sign instantly. If I get a call from the dispatcher or Lower Currituck that there's a car on fire in the middle of the road, I can put it out caution, pull off the road, rest yourself, take it easy, you know, you're gonna be caught in a lot of bad traffic. And there's a lot of reasons for the message board sign. I'll leave you with this thought, you know, the, the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States of America basically says that a government cannot allow itself to do things that it doesn't allow its citizens to do. Currituck County has two signs that I know of, probably got a lot more than that, don't they, Dan? You got one at the Welcome Center, you got one at the YMCA. Both of them are about fifteen foot in the air, both of them have message boards. I just want the same treatment. I wanna be able to advertise the same way. A lady on the planning board, uh, I think was, is it Mrs. Moore in Moyoc? I, I, I think, uh, anyway, she's with the Methodist Church there. And she applauded me, and she said, you know, Mr. Nelms, we put one of those signs up in front of our church. And she said, you wouldn't believe the increase we've had in people coming to our church since we put that sign up. And it's all about the size with me, guys. Papa Branch Baptist Church just put up a beautiful sign, uh, this past year in front of their church, which is right down the street from Mike and I. But the sign is what, Mike? It's low to the ground. You can't see it. The letters are super, super small, you can't read it. And it's a gorgeous sign, but that wouldn't work for me wanting to get people to my business. I need a directional sign that's fifteen-foot, and I need one with a message board. And I respectfully ask for your approval. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Thank you for your time.
Anyone have any questions? I just, while we're going back on the Wayback Machine, I, I believe you were on the board when that dreaded land use plan was approved.
I could've been, I could've. It wasn't the first mistake I made in my life. No, it was, uh, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's just frustrating, um, guys, because the girl's not here tonight, but it's, it's just frustrating when you have to fight your government to stay alive. I've been working on this sign thing for three years. I've been working for really all my life. I, I've always complied, I will continue to comply whether you approve or deny it, and I'll go down the road and do the next best thing I have to do to accomplish the end that I need to do. But to my business, this, this sign is critical for me. I mean, it's, and, and, and you all know that I speak the truth. Uh, I have my facts. And I just wish the next time we appoint, or you appoint, somebody to a sign board or something other board, that they have somebody that has some knowledge about it.
Well, Mr. Nelms, the board, the sign ordinance board was made up of business people.
Well...
And just very few citizens when it was done.
Yeah.
So the, the ordinance as it's written was proposed by the business community along with the Chamber of Commerce.
And nonprofits.
Yeah, and some nonprofits, so that's, that's, that's who made it up. All right, with that, I'm gonna close the public hearing. If the board doesn't have any further questions, then ask for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, in light of the concerns that Commissioner Griggs had made, and, uh, again, I grew up in Grandy, I've seen it grow, I've seen everything, um, going through there, and I've talked to a lot of citizens, um, heard a lot of pros and cons both ways, but, uh, I just have a concern that the planning board, um, did not do their diligence, and I'm, I'm still concerned, you know, for the items that, that David, uh, Mr. Griggs had specified, that I would like to, um, make a motion that we remend this back to the planning board and have them clearly define those three items that, uh, Mr. Griggs had earlier, um, citing the factors, um, regarding section two point three point nine of the UDO, um, how is this consistent with the adopted, uh, use plan, and all the other plans that we, um, currently have, and regarding the recommendations of the two thousand and eleven sign committee.
I think we have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? Here, so the motion is to send it back to the planning board to do the step that was not done, and then bring it back after they do that. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. It'll go back to the planning board to do the steps that were, the planning board did not do. Next item under new business is consideration and action on a resolution of the Board of Commissioners for Currituck County, establishing legislative agenda and request for the introduction of local acts by the county legislative delegation. Would that be the county manager, or...
I'll handle this, Mr. Chair.
The county attorney.
You should have before you a proposed resolution, um, that refers to the items that are in your agenda package. What appears in your agenda package are actually how the, the bills might be proposed to members of our legislative delegation, uh, and, and they, of course, will refer them to bill drafting there at the Journal Assembly for, to put it into the, the type of format they think is most appropriate. So this is suggestive language to them and try to help them with the process. I'll quickly walk through the four items that the board has expressed an interest in being included in our legislative agenda for consideration by the Journal Assembly this session. First of all, it'd be an act to allow certain counties to remove abandoned vessels from navigable waters. As I explained to the board before, um, we've had situations in the past where, particularly in Toils Bay Colony, there have been boats that, that sunk, um, or were sinking after becoming so deteriorated, and we could not get property owners, uh, to willingly remove them. And so the county had to kind of bluff our way through in, in order to, to force a remedy with regard to at least two or three of those situations in Toils Bay Colony. Commissioner Ilet, of course, has recently noted, there's a vessel, I think, off of Knott's Island that, that probably needs to be handled in a similar manner. During the last session of the Journal Assembly, Brunswick County and Dare County had enacted, uh, act, and local legislation that allowed them to treat abandoned vessels, much like we're already authorized to treat a man, abandoned or junked motor vehicles. So what this proposed legislation would do would be to add Currituck County in addition to Brunswick and Dare as counties that are able to treat abandoned vessels, uh, as, as junked basically, and, and give us a, an ability to deal with them in a process that we would adopt by ordinance. Just for your information, that, that legislation that Brunswick and Dare County already have authority for, uh, defines an abandoned vessel as a vessel that is moored, anchored, or otherwise located for more than thirty consecutive days in a one hundred and eighty consecutive day period without permission of a dock owner, or a vessel that is in danger of sinking, has sunk, is resting on the bottom, or is located such that it is a hazard to navigation or is an immediate danger to other vessels. That's the situation that we've had to deal with over the last couple of years. The next piece of legislation would be an act to allow Currituck County to use developer funds for the construction of roads to serve occupants, residents, or invitees of a subdivision or development to enforce ordinances. You've already heard the manager tonight tell you that counties in North Carolina do not have the authority to construct, maintain, or improve roads, and that, of course, is true. And this legislation would not, uh, give us any additional authority than that which we already have. However, what it would do is slightly modify currently existing statute. Our Unified Development Ordinance right now requires interconnectivity between subdivisions. So when one developer, uh, develops this property and subdivides it into lots and, and creates a street system, they are required to have a road, uh, go to the next adjacent property, and hopefully one day will tie in to, to the next subdivision that comes along. There's a provision in North Carolina law that allows for a developer to, in lieu of constructing that tie-in, and we find we have some difficulty here in Currituck County because we have large drainage ditches between pieces of property. The boundary line of the property is usually the center line of the ditch, uh, and unless you can get the cooperation of the adjacent property owner, it is really an impossibility for someone developing property to be able to create, to, to complete their portion of the road for later tie-in to the adjacent subdivision. So there's a statute currently on the books that allows a developer, in lieu of constructing that, that street connection, to provide the county with funds that can later be used to complete that street connection or tie-in. However, that statute goes on to say that a county must, then provide those funds to a municipality, and the municipality shall then construct that tie-in road, or the municipality may contract with the State Department of Transportation. Well, that's an impossibility for Currituck County, and we, of course, have no municipalities. So what that would, what this proposed legislative, uh, language would, would do is allow Currituck County, uh, as a county, to take those funds, hold them, and later, at the appropriate time, use those funds to tie in the streets and the connectivity that already is required by Unified Development Ordinance. Any questions on that? It's a little kind of a lengthy explanation. Okay? If not, uh, the third piece is an act to establish a season for trapping foxes in Currituck County. Uh, Mr. Terry Miles came to the board, uh, a number of months ago, he's a local trapper here in Currituck County, and he was asking that, uh, the county request legislative authority to establish a fox trapping season in Currituck County. Unless the Journal Assembly enacts such legislation, there is going to be no fox trapping in Currituck. So the proposed legislative language would provide for open season for taking foxes by trapping in Currituck County from November seventeen through January one of each year. Uh, those are the same dates that hunting, uh, fox, uh, with firearms is allowed. The fourth piece of legislation is an act to allow counties to enforce ordinances within, within public trust areas. Currently, we have, uh, at least one situation now that, that still exists on the north beach where a house is basically in the public trust area, it's on the beach. Um, other, other entities in, in Dare County, like Town of Naggshead, had a, a significant problem after hurricanes with houses being left on the beach. Um, all, this legislation originally kind of came out of Naggshead taking action to remove structures from its public beaches that were falling apart, and the property owners refused to remove them. Uh, Naggshead was sued, but in the process of that lawsuit, Naggshead was able to get the Journal Assembly to adopt legislation to allow municipalities on the coast to deal with the nuisance or abatement of nuisances on the beach within their jurisdictions, but left out the ability of counties to do the same. Uh, so therefore, we now are unable, and particularly after a Court of Appeals decision that determined, without this legislation, a unit of local government may not remove nuisances from its beaches, uh, we now don't have the ability to do anything with the house that is currently on the beach, north beach, or any other situation that might occur, uh, in the future. So what this legislation would do would actually be to, to allow for counties the exact same language that were allowed to municipalities in the last session of the Journal Assembly. So that is our, that would be our proposed legislative package to forward to our delegation and ask for their support.
Commissioners, have any questions? And Mr. McCree? Then we would need to make a motion to send this resolution forward, ask him for these additional, um, things to be enacted by our legislature and be introduced by Representatives Steinberg and Senator Bill Cook.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, consideration and action on an ordinance of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners amending sections ten dash sixty-three of chapter ten of the Currituck County Code of Ordinances to allow certain activities involving motor vehicles on the beach strand between Shad Street and Corolla Village Road and the northern boundary of Pine Island Plan Unit Development northward one hundred and thirty feet, and making a technical correction. Is that correct, Mr. Woody?
That's me, that's correct. Um, I, I refer you to the, the form of the ordinance that, that was placed at your seat at the beginning of the meeting as opposed to the one that appears in your agenda package. There were some slight modifications made today, uh, in conversation with Commissioner Ilet and his conversation, uh, with one of the parties that had requested this modification to the ordinance. Um, the ordinance overall view is that it will allow now for motor vehicles to be utilized in certain areas of the beach, in particular from Shad Street right-of-way north, uh, to the Corolla Village Road right-of-way, basically encompassing the beach area that fronts or abuts Corolla Light Plan Unit Development. And then the second exception will allow for use of motor vehicles from the, from the southern beach, uh, access, uh, right there at Pine Island Plan Unit Development, from the nor, north edge of Pine Island Plan Unit Development north one hundred and thirty feet. Uh, that one hundred and thirty feet would encompass the county's right-of-way, which extends down to the ocean, and then one hundred feet north of that, which is owned, uh, by the Currituck Club for use of their, uh, owners and guests. So I'll refer you now to the ordinance itself on page one, at the bottom, line thirty-three and thirty-four, you'll see...
Bless you.
You'll see language that is stricken, uh, and that is language that you will see provided for on page two in sec, proposed sections four and five, uh, of the ordinance. Uh, going to line nine on page two... Going to line nine on page two, the technical correction is actually the striking of language that provides use of motor vehicles in support of a surfing competition consisting of competitors under eighteen years of age, et cetera. That was language that was added last year for a one-time surfing event and actually had a sunset provision, so that it expired in July of last year. And so this is a cleanup that will remove that provision that expired under its own terms in any event. And so now we would propose placing in subsection four to allow for the delivery, placement, and pickup of recreational equipment, umbrellas and chairs, collection of solid waste, and educational programs by management of a planned unit development community within that area of the beach strand, again between the southern right-of-way of Shad Street northward to the northern right-of-way line of Corolla Village Road, and then to assure additional safety and protection for pedestrians accessing the beach by those two rights-of-way. It goes on to further provide, provided that a motor vehicle used as provided by this subsection may travel across the Shad Street and Corolla Village Road rights-of-way onto the beach strand only between the hours of six o'clock a.m. and seven-thirty a.m. and five-thirty p.m. and seven o'clock p.m. That concept would allow for Corolla Light, essentially, to take a motor vehicle across the Shad Street ramp or Corolla Village Road and place it then onto the beach within the boundary area set forth by this ordinance where it could be utilized during the day for the support and enhancement of those purposes set forth in the ordinance, basically within their planned unit development. The hours are consistent with the hours provided last year or two years ago in an amendment that allowed for motor vehicles to go onto the beach for delivery and placement of recreational equipment by commercial enterprises during those times of the day, as well as previously by planned unit development, community management companies. A new subsection five would allow the same type of delivery, placement, and pickup of recreational equipment and materials, collection of solid waste, and education by programs by management of a planned unit community development. Again, as I said a moment ago, within that area of the beach, from the northern Pine Island Planned Unit Development boundary line north one-hundred-and-thirty feet, which encompasses the area owned by the Currituck Club, their concept is that they would be providing a service to their guests and owners by taking with gator or similar type of small vehicles, their visitor or guest, beach equipment, umbrellas, chairs, things of that nature, down the county's right-of-way. But this would enable them to go onto the beach and then go a hundred feet, no more than one-hundred feet north, to deposit their guest recreational material onto the beach. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions of Mr. Scanlon? I mean, Mr. McCree?
I've just got one. I mean, anytime I hear about vehicles on a beach, and I'm always concerned about the safety of, especially the younger children running up and down the beach, and I guess what it sounds like here, that once they get on there, there's not going to be any more traveling, just, and you said a small little gator-type vehicle periodically through the day.
That's what they're proposing, is to use a gator-type of vehicle. Now, the ordinance doesn't limit it to that. I mean, it could allow for any motor vehicle that they place on the beach.
So there's no limit on the size of the vehicle?
That's correct.
I'm just confirming, and so it's just any time of the day, not the first thing in the morning, last thing in the evening? Is that correct?
For that area from Shad Street north to Corolla Village Road, the vehicles to be placed within that boundary area in those hour and a half early in the morning to an hour, and then can only be removed an hour and a half late in the afternoon, early evening. For the southern beach access area, that area that typically is used by Currituck Club community, there is no such similar hour restriction because they will be driving down the right-of-way to the beach, and then they own the area one-hundred feet, within an area one-hundred feet north of there.
The concept, as I understand it, talking to the general manager for the.
Corolla Light.
Corolla Light, excuse me, lost my train of thought. The pickup truck will be used in the morning to go and set up chairs, umbrellas, that type of stuff that will come off the beach. Pickup truck won't go back on the beach until in the afternoon when they go dump the trashcans, pick up the trash. One trip down, one trip back. That's what he's looking for. He'll have a gator-type vehicle that will be out there at the end of the day, taking care of little odds and ends things. That strip of Corolla Light is pretty expansive to be able to travel along and do different things.
I think they have trashcans.
Trashcans.
They like to empty the trash and keep the beach clean.
Sure, yeah. And so that's intent, not looking to expand on anything anymore than what they've been doing in the past.
Anyways. They've been doing it anyway.
Yeah, yeah. All this does is legitimize it, and I've had conversations today, like I say, numerous phone calls, talked with the Corolla Civic Association, they're on board with it, no problems there. So I think consensus was reached today. I think Heidi, there, she's certainly done some explaining, a whole lot deeper than what I could, and seems to me like it's consensus in the community, so I'm prepared to support it.
One last question. Mr. McCree, any complaints by the Sheriff's Department or EMS or anybody that these vehicles have interfered with them, as they've been operating?
We have not spoken with the Sheriff Department or EMS. I will note, we have some time to do that because as an ordinance, it must be adopted by unanimous vote in order for it to pass tonight. Of course, Commissioner Gilbert's not here, so it needs to lay over until your next meeting in any event, at which time it may pass by a simple majority, so we can, during that period of time, receive any kind of comments from the sheriff or EMS.
I would ask so.
And there's one other piece to this as well. Part of this that you don't see here tonight that will be forthcoming is both of these entities have agreed, as you know, we have no handicap accessibility areas over on the outer banks. We have no handicap ramps. Anytime we have visitors that are handicapped, it's a problem. These folks have more than graciously offered from here on out, if there is handicapped people that come, they will come and pick them up either from the county bathroom facilities where she operates out of, Currituck Club operates out of, or the person or people can be dropped off at our bathroom facilities there at Whalehead, and they will take those folks and will deliver them to their community areas with chairs, with umbrellas and towels, and take care of those folks. And that's part of the benefit that the county will get out of that. So I just, I wanted to, that's something that will be forthcoming, that will be talked about a little more in some negotiations, I guess, with the county manager and attorney. But that's agreed in principle to do, so.
Yeah, talk to the sheriff, I'm good.
That's a tremendous benefit, Vance, I think.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question.
Need to make a motion first.
Well, I call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I certainly will make a motion to approve as it's written.
Have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
I have a brief comment.
Aye.
I have a brief comment.
Go ahead.
That year needs to be updated. Page two, line thirty-one.
It will be updated and time to be read at your next meeting.
Just checking. No further comment, Mr. Chairman.
Good job. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. Have a motion for approval?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion for approval?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Let me find this. Then at the bottom, Mr. Scanlon, the fire department purchase requests, what are they for?
Ones for Moyock's turnout gear.
Turnout gear, okay.
And.
Brawls for hose reel.
Hose reel and Corolla.
Okay.
I have two questions on the budget amendment. All right. One is on Whalehead. Mr. Scanlon, could you explain that a little bit more?
We haven't got to that one yet.
That budget amendment, actually, is a TDA budget.
That's in the tourism authority. Is that the one you're waiting on?
And number three, the animal shelter?
That one was for.
Animal shelter is a change order for the construction of that facility. When the project was designed, the road, the entrance road that goes to cooperative extension, the county owned it, and so the project envisioned open cutting the road to put the waterline connection there. Since the project has, or since that time, NC DOT has actually taken over ownership of the road, and part of their review is if they come back and they don't support an open cut, they wanted the project to be, the line to be jack and board, and so it's a change order to the contractor for that contractor to actually board that line under the road versus an open cut.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Nothing, good.
Anyone else? Did we get a motion for approval?
Made a motion to approve, yes, sir.
Okay. Need a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Commissioners report. Mr. Ilet, you have anything?
I don't think so this evening.
Mr. Payment?
I would just like to let everyone know that last week I did attend the Governor's School, and it was very enlightening to learn a lot of things that commissioners can and can't do. It was worthwhile for me, and it should help me to serve the citizens of Currituck, Currituck well.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing.
Mr. Hall?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Griggs?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
The only thing I will add is, folks, you better keep an eye on what's going on in Raleigh when it comes to some bills being introduced as it affects your local counties. And as an example, right now, there is a proposed bill to change the formula for sales tax that, as it's currently proposed, would cost Currituck County two-and-a-half million dollars a year, which is equal to about seven cents of tax. So that's one bill, and I think Dare County, it would cut their sales tax by about ten or eleven million dollars a year.
And we are going to Raleigh tomorrow to lobby against that, correct?
Yes.
Well, and actually, you might want to add that it's kind of a redistribution type of a scheme, is it not, where other counties, some counties lose and some counties gain?
Yeah, some counties get a windfall of about ten million dollars of additional revenue they haven't asked for, and some get three, four, seven, eight million, but some counties really get some taken away, so.
And for some reason.
What was Dare County's loss?
Like eleven million, I think.
And for some reason, Dare County and Currituck County were one of those counties that were elected to be the.
Loser.
Yeah, loser, so that other counties could gain. It's the.
I don't suppose there's a correlation with those same counties that have ridiculously low homeowners insurance, but that also be.
Very well could be.
Tight end.
And might be our former senatorial district we were in, who knows? But, Mr. Scanlon, do you have anything?
Just to reiterate that after your last meeting, the Sheriff's Department did step up, and they have identified the necessary funds within their current budget, will not require any budget amendment to move forward with installing additional security cameras that you just will go on.
Thank you. And with that, I need a motion to recess the county commissioners' meetings and to convene as a Tourism Development Authority. Have a motion and a second?
I second it.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Scanlon, we have one budget amendment tonight. Could you explain that, please?
Yes, sir. You have a budget amendment that actually does a couple of things. The first is in the line items utility and the historic Jarvisburg operations. Both of those line items are being increased, five thousand dollars each to cover the cost of utilities associated with both of those line items. The first one is associated with the bathroom that was just constructed on Corolla Village Lane. That bathroom did not exist last year when we did the budget, and therefore, this year, utilities money was not appropriated, and so we're budgeting money for the year for the utilities. A very similar circumstance exists for the Jarvisburg school. When the budget was prepared last year, no money was put in there for the ongoing operational power bill, water bill, telephone bill, and therefore, you're seeing an appropriation to that line item. The Beach Nurishment is a program that you actually approved at a previous meeting. This is to provide the funding to support the dune restoration program. The large number of the Whalehead construction, one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, that actually is a, an amount of money that the Board of Commissioners approved last year. You approved two-hundred thousand dollars to do onsite improvements to the grounds. It was a, the Whalehead Trust was actually matching us a hundred thousand to do a project where it was to install the new entrance sign. It installed some paths, it installed some landscaping. That project was not completed at June thirtieth of last year, so you're seeing the balance of that money. The difference between the one-seventy-seven and the two-hundred thousand is the cost of the design and professional fees that has been spent to date for that project to be designed and placed for bids. We now have bids in hand, and we're ready to bring this board, this forward back to the board for approval of the contract. So, long story, this is money that was approved in last year's budget that was not spent. The balance of those unspent monies are being brought forward to this year to support the project that was approved for, which was improvements to the Whalehead property. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Just one question, the guardhouse that was initially there at Whalehead when that was going to be a community, does this capital improvement project involve the moving of that?
It, the raising of it. We have talked to other, we've had interest, others that have expressed an interest perhaps of surplusing it and them taking it or moving it off the property. So far, those that have looked at that, it's proven to be cost prohibitive. So in this project that is being brought forward to you at a future meeting, the raising of that building is part of that contract.
Because I know.
Destroying of the building.
Yes, sir.
Say raising, some people might think.
No, with a Z. Tearing down.
It's got a Z in it, right?
But this is changing.
The entrance.
The recommendation, the whole entrance.
Yeah, well, it's not relocating the entrance, but it's tearing down the guard shack, replacing the sign, replacing landscape. It's a path that connects, if I recall, from where the employees park, a path that goes from there south to the water's edge, all the way up and ties back into the, there's a bridge that goes across the pond, so there's a contiguous path there. There's some landscaping that goes with it. Conceptually, that was, the dollar amount was approved last year to support that project. It was designed, but it wasn't built. We got into the season, so now we're bringing that money forward so that project can be built this year.
And again, it was emphasis, the, it was worked out in agreement that the county would provide one-hundred thousand if Whalehead Preservation Trust would provide the other one-hundred thousand.
Correct.
So it was a match between the county and.
Correct. And being since the county ultimately has to spend the entire two-hundred thousand, you're seeing a line item that equates for the whole two-hundred thousand. What you're not going to see is there's going to be a revenue line item that will show the hundred thousand coming in from the trust, matching hundred thousand that exists in occupancy tax to support the program. So what you're looking at is the expense line item, and again, it's going to reflect the totality of the project, which is the two-hundred thousand dollars.
Revenue coming in, a hundred thousand.
Have we received that hundred thousand from them?
We have not.
When are we going to get that?
Well, we haven't, or this board hasn't approved the contract to actually undertake the work. Once the work begins, we'll draw that money out of the trust.
So, Mr. Scanlon, you said that we're going to be obtaining multiple bids to accomplish this?
It already has been bid.
Okay.
But yes, they're.
But we did receive multiple bids on it.
Yes, we did.
And their hundred thousand is already on their books as your work.
Yes.
Thing to remember is their hundred thousand got generated from the county occupancy tax anyways.
It is, it's.
Their capital dollars.
Money that in previous years was appropriate to the trust that they did not spend, so they have it in their reserves, and they're willing to, or agree to, put it back in the county to improve the property that.
And the county will be running this project.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, we need a motion for the budget amendment.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval? We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next item is closed session pursuant to GS one forty-three. Next item is closed session pursuant to GS one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A three to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege. We need that motion.
So moved.
I'll second it. No, wait a second. I got ahead of myself. Need a motion to adjourn the tourism authority and reconvene as a Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Have a motion to close the, adjourn the tourism and reconvene as a Board of Commissioners. We have that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Now we need the motion to go into closed session pursuant to what I just read.
My motion still stands.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.